Charleston Law Firm to speak about more opioid lawsuit issues. But one of the big things was the Airbnb issue that Commissioner Aglenger and the sheriff and I had all an issue we're trying to work out, which I'm going to bring up later in the agenda. So talk more about that later. Also, I did meet with the tax assessor and I spoke to Commissioner Aglenger briefly about Mr. Leroy Barker who we retained for consulting services. He saves us about $20,000 to $30,000 a year, especially with the new assessor coming in. She wanted to make a recommendation that he come in and speak with us about his consultations and what he would do for the new assessor and the money he can save us and the efficiencies he can continue for us. So I'd like to talk more about that later as well. He'll be wanting to come in and present to the commission. But just a heads up, the biggest thing is the state auditors meeting, conference, annual training, the attorney, well, our state auditor and hopefully future Attorney General will be there, or was there, rather, and Secretary Carmichael, several professors and attorneys, and we learned a great deal about a lot of different things. But just to touch on a few, the main thing was broadband. This new bead money will systematically knock off the list every remaining address that doesn't already have a funding source. So they plan to roll the rest of these monies out this fall. So this is great for West Virginia, great for Hampshire County. We've invested a lot of money as a commission and I believe this will save us a lot of money moving forward because now they've kind of taken this off of our plate. But, you know, it probably is not going to happen as fast as we would like it, but anything that already has ARDOF, CAF, CAF-1, CAF-2, ARP, reconnect allocations allocated towards it would not be eligible for these monies. So you don't have duplicate funding sources. So it's a major step forward, $1.2 billion. And I believe if my memory serves me correctly, Thrasher Engineering had $20 to $30 million projected for our county. And you can see, I believe, Lead Corps is the current contractor working for the provider and Gutenkoff. So I see them everywhere, mainly doing aerial fiber, but I can definitely see they're starting to spend some of the money because there was a concern that a lot of these bigger providers were just low bidding these funding sources just so their competitors wouldn't get the money and they were signing on the dotted line to get the money and knowing full well that they wouldn't be able to provide the speeds and meet the deadlines. But the secretary assures us they're keeping a close eye on those topics, if you will. But anyways, they plan to roll out this bead money this fall, so $1.2 billion. And that's supposed to service every remaining address that wasn't already funded in the state. So that was a big, big win for Hampshire County. Did meet with Delegate Hillenbrand as well to talk about the local economic development assistance grant for Greenspring and just to read real briefly the letter from the governor. Dear Commissioner Cannon, congratulations on the local economic development assistance grant you have been awarded by the West Virginia House of Delegates. Please find enclosed check for $3,000 as requested by the West Virginia House of Delegates to be used to purchase painting supplies and building materials for the Greenspring Low Water Bridge Committee. If you should have any questions, comments, or concerns related to your grant, contact West Virginia House of Delegates Finance Committee. Thank you for your commitment to doing great work for the state of West Virginia. Signed, Governor Jim Justice. So we appreciate that from the House of Delegates, Mr. Hillenbrand, and the governor. Just another local committee created by concerned citizens and I thought it would be a good idea to support them and appreciate the House of Delegates as well. Did also meet with the sheriff about ideas on the roof of the Cape and Bridge Community Complex and he made a good point about a possible insurance claim, which I think we need to look into for that massive water leak we had. So whenever Mr. Hock gets here, I'd like to talk further about that. And not to go on and on, I'll save the rest for everything else that's coming up on the agenda. Commissioner Aglenger, do you have a report, sir?
Yes, I have just a couple of things. I was on my family vacation there for about nine or 10 days, so I've been out here in the past couple of weeks, but been busy since I got back and I'll just, again, President Commissioner Cannon and I had been at the training. We just got back this afternoon. He touched on the news on the broadband. There was a few questions I had about that and mostly I'm not going to repeat what Commissioner Cannon just brought to us. I do wish our county broadband guy was here. He could probably give you guys some more details and bring some of the questions I had about that to light. But definitely, you know, it sounds like good news. There is a few questions I'm going to look into as to how certain things would affect us. But that's something we as a county took an aggressive approach to about seven years ago. We made a lot of headway and I do know and I can say this, some of the statewide stuff that they did was, you know, to get funding, to figure things out, to come up with a model, to come up with maps. They used some of Hampshire County's model there. And I've said that way back in the past, but, you know, it unfortunately takes that long for stuff to roll around. Couple of other things at the state auditor commissioner's training. It is required for us to be there by code. Lot of budget training. It's somewhat repetitive for Commissioner Cannon and I. We've both been here a few years now, so some of that's repetitive, but there always is something new. I think we probably both learned some things we didn't know. So it is something we should attend and, like I said, it is required that we attend. The one thing I have been, I've made some emails and phone calls about, is that Airbnb issue? And I'll touch on it lightly because that's something we see more and more of here in our county and I think it's a good thing. You know, that brings, boosts our tourism. It's just, it's a pretty positive thing all the way around. However, there is, we do have an issue now with a mistake that was made on the hotel motel tax. An Airbnb as an agent for a property owner that advertises their house or cabin or whatever as an Airbnb, their agent will take care of the hotel motel tax, will not take care of it for them, but do the exchange of the money to the county or town or whatever it, wherever it's supposed to go. The problem there is, is the Airbnbs are very, very vague in what they give the county and that works okay until there's a mistake. And then it's extremely hard for the county to fix the mistake because of the lack of detail that the Airbnb supply when they send us the monies. So for now, you know, I would say if this is something you as a citizen here in Hampshire County, or not a citizen, and you have property here and you're doing an Airbnb, be very explicit when you sign up about how the taxes are going to be taken care of and that you want record of it and that, you know, and keep your own good records as well. Because there's a problem with the law there that doesn't allow us as a county to get the details we need when there's a mistake. And I won't go into more detail than that for the sake of, you know, privacy for different individuals. But like I said, it's, there is a problem there and I spoke to Delegate Hillenbrand about it a couple of weeks ago here at length after one of our meetings. So it is something we're working on, but, you know, I'm putting that out there that, you know, we're seeing more and more of these. But when you sign up to do that, be very explicit with your agent that that's taken care of properly. And like I said, that's because it's, the way the law's written now, it's extremely hard for us to do anything. Now, I would think that the agent and the owner could, could and should and be able to work those details out, but a lot of times with an Airbnb, when you call your agent or whatever, you're talking to somebody in California or even in another country. So it gets difficult. Pretty much Commissioner Cannon touched on some other general stuff there. So again, I've got my Parks and Rec meeting coming up this week and a couple of other small committee meetings coming up later this week and beginning of next week. So that's all I have. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Moving on to convention, visitors bureau chair opening.
You want me to go ahead and start opening, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I see a price in this one.
Yeah, I don't see a bid price.
There's not a spec sheet or price sheet in either one of these, unless there's a...
No. This is a, just a submittal of a statement of qualifications and this is just a master planning presentation for Thrasher. Relevant experience. I don't actually see a bid or proposal unless Mrs. Ladd was due to present that in conjunction with these.
I don't think she had planned presenting.
I would, at this time, move that we table this topic until Mrs. Ladd, Director Ladd could stand for further questioning and presentation.
Yeah. Was that a motion, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would second that because, and for explanation to the public, we were expecting a bid. That was my understanding and yours as well, Commissioner?
Yes, sir, yeah.
I've double-checked the boxes here. I'm assuming that they, just making sure. That they didn't slip the most important page in there separate and they didn't. So there's been some misunderstanding between the director of CVB there and the two bidders.
Her published request for bid was pretty clear and the, I think that one company had done a very similar thing on her previous response some time back.
Because all this is, clerk, both of the, both bidders have submitted like a summary of their qualifications and there's not, there's not a, the most important page in there, like usual.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed the table until next regular meeting. Yes, you would, please. Moving on here, Director Barnes, compliance official cell tower update permit for Bald Hill Tower.
Good evening.
How are you?
Wonderful.
More permits, huh? That's good for citizens with cell phones. Yeah.
It's pretty much a standard update.
You're happy with everything? All their submittals are in order?
Yes.
They paid their...
They're always on top of it.
Commissioner Cannon and I move that we approve the cell tower permit for the update on the Bald Hill Tower.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
You too. Moving on to MO, excuse me, Hampshire County Development Authority land transfer with old hospital. Director Hock. President Hock. Do you like to come up, ma'am?
Do you gentlemen have the resolution we sent over?
Mr. Clerk?
I did not get one.
Okay. Okay. As you know, this project, I've been at the Development Authority now 15 months and this hospital project has been in, on our plates since then and I know it goes back several years. And there are a lot of legal, there are a lot of entities in Hampshire County that have an interest in this land transfer, not only the county commission, the building commission, the development authority, the board of education, and the rescue squad. And this document or this resolution is very similar to one that has been, that has already passed at the development authority and at the board of education. And this is the final document that we need to properly transfer the land where the new West Elementary School sits and transfer it out of the development authority's hands and into the rightful hands of the board of education. And so the development authority is not really suited to build and/or operate and run a school. We certainly want to put that where it belongs with the board of education. And this document, once it is signed by President Cannon, hopefully that it will be signed, then we'll be able to give it to the attorneys and then President Hock of the development authority will then be able to sign a land transfer, deed in the property over to the board of education. And if you gentlemen have any questions, we're happy to answer them and I can give more detail if I need to.
The only thing that I was looking for was, did you see a detail in here where if that property ever ceases to be used for a rescue squad, it would be, is that separate from this or in this?
No, it is part of that. There is a reversion clause. It actually is in the board of education's resolution and it basically says that if the rescue squad would ever cease to do, cease to be there in that location, that that property would then revert back to the board of education. And that is in the, that is in the board of education's resolution, which I brought a copy with as well. Of course, this is the original, so I might have to ask you to give me the fact.
Okay.
It's in this document.
Thank you. Now, I thought the board of education was going to present that to us separately, the request that they have first right of refusal to the property upon sale.
Okay.
Was that your understanding?
Well, Jeff Poncium did not tell me that, but our attorney did tell me that that was part of the agreement, that that revert, that if the rescue squad ever decided to cease operating there, that that land would revert back to the board of education.
There's not a spec sheet or price sheet in either one of these.
No.
Unless there's a...
This is a, uh, just a submittal of a statement of qualifications. And this is just a master planning presentation for Thrasher. Uh, relevant experience. I don't actually see a bid or proposal unless Mrs. Ladd was due to present that in conjunction with these.
I don't think he had planned presenting.
I would, at this time, uh, move that we table this topic until Mrs. Ladd, Director Ladd, could stand for further questioning and presentation.
Yeah.
Was that a motion, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would second that because, and for explanation to the public, we were expecting a bid. That was my understanding, and yours as well, Commissioner?
Yes, sir, yeah.
I've double-checked the boxes here. I'm assuming that they... Just making sure that they didn't slip the most important page in there separate, and they didn't. So, there's been some misunderstanding between the Director of CVB there and the two bidders.
Her published request for bid was pretty clear, and the, uh, I think that one company had done a very similar thing on her previous, uh, response sometime back.
Because all this is, clerk, both of the, both bidders have submitted like a summary of their qualifications, and there's not a, the most important page in there, like usual.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. The table until next regular meeting. Yes, you would, please. Moving on here, Director Barnes, uh, compliance official, cell tower update permit for Bald Hill Tower.
Good evening.
How are you?
Wonderful.
More permits, huh? That's good for citizens with cell phones.
It's pretty much a standard update.
You're happy with everything? All their submittals are in order?
Yes.
They paid their...
They're always on top of it.
Commissioner Cannon and I move that we approve the, uh, cell tower permit for the update on the Bald Hill Tower.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
You too. Moving on to MOU, um, excuse me, Hampshire County Development Authority land transfer with old hospital. Director Hott. President Hott. Would you like to come up, ma'am?
Do you gentlemen have the resolution we sent over?
Mr. Clerk? I did not get one.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, as you know, this project, um, I've been at the Development Authority now 15 months, and, um, this hospital project has been in, um, on our plates since then, and I know it goes back, um, several years. And there are a lot of legal entities, there are a lot of entities in Hampshire County that have an interest in this, um, land transfer, not only the County Commission, the Building Commission, the Development Authority, the Board of Education, and the Rescue Squad. And this document, or this resolution, is very similar to one that has been, that has already passed at the Development Authority and at the Board of Education, and this is the final document that we need to properly transfer the land where the new West Elementary School sits, uh, and transfer it out of the Development Authority's hands and into the rightful hands, um, of the Board of Education. And so, um, the Development Authority, um, is not really suited to build and/or operate and run a school. We certainly want to put that where it belongs with the Board of Education. And this document, um, once it is signed by President Cannon, um, hopefully that it will be signed, um, then we'll be able to give it to the attorneys, and then President Hott of the Development Authority will then be able to sign a land transfer, um, deed in the property over to the Board of Education. And if you gentlemen have any questions, we're happy to answer them, and I can give more detail if I need to.
The only thing that I was looking for, uh, was, uh, did you see a detail in here where if that property ever ceases to be used for a rescue squad, it would be...
Yes.
Is that separate from this, or in this?
No, it is part of that. There is a reversion clause. Uh, it actually is in the Board of Education's, um, um, resolution, and it basically says that if the rescue squad would ever cease to do, um, cease to be there in that location, that that property would then revert back to the Board of Education. And that is in the, that is in the Board of Education's resolution, which I brought a copy with as well. Of course, this is the original, so I might have to ask you to give me the back.
Okay.
It's in this document.
Thank you. Now, I thought the Board of Education was going to present that to us separately, the request that, that they have first right of refusal to the property...
Okay.
Upon sale. Was that your understanding?
Well, Jeff Poncium did not tell me that, um, but our attorney did tell me that that was part of the agreement, that that revert, that, that if the rescue squad ever decided to cease operating there, that that land would revert back to the Board of Education.
That's right there. You okay with that?
Yeah, yeah. And I see it, it references the, uh, of course, the deed and then the plats, the surveys that we've been seeing come across the table the last two years, and, uh, you guys are familiar with that and okay with the, all that part of it, like as far as the road and the, and the different little, uh, lots and sections there?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the right of reversion clause, which I did find.
No, I've, um, yeah, I should have...
Yeah.
Both directly to that. Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the right of reversal clause, and I saw up here, uh, on page two where it addresses that first, and then it addresses again there where Commissioner Cannon... But no, I was referring to just the, uh, you know, several times we've had the big map in here, and, and Development Authority is good with everything there, correct?
Yes, and I should have brought the new one with me, um, and I didn't, I apologize. There's a small copy, um, at the very back. It may not be at the back of the one that you had, but I do have a copy of the new plat. But the right of ways and the easements have been accommodated for the buses and the school traffic to flow in, in front of the school where the rescue squad had property, which I guess we did a land transfer between the rescue squad and the, um, Board of Education, and the, and the rescue squad also has, um, right of way access for the ambulances to go out the back and down the, the new road.
And I see that's on your copy.
Yeah, I apologize.
Mr. Hott, so I, yeah, usually on a detailed, uh, land transfer, and today's, there's usually a plat with it, but I see it's on your copy, so...
I'm sorry.
That, that's what I was kinda...
I should have brought you the big copy.
Now, just the fact that it's here with this, uh, document makes me feel better. That's, that's what I was searching for. With that, Commissioner Cannon, I, I would move that the Hampshire County Commission, approve the, uh, uh, final transfer of the Hampshire County, uh, the, uh, property at the, uh, New South Branch Elementary, uh, from the Hampshire County Development Authority in accordance to the Hampshire County Development Authority Resolution presented to us here this evening.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. And you authorize me to sign?
Yes.
Yes. Is this the one you want signed?
I need the one signed that says Hampshire County Commission on it. The one that I think you have, Commissioner Engler, is the one that the Development Authority signed, but we, we would just simply like a, an original from President Cannon. We'll then turn those over to the attorneys, and we're hoping the land transfer will actually occur, um, before the end of this month, and we can...
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you.
JT.
Yes, sir.
Does this copy need to be notarized?
No, sir, it does not. I'm sorry, we do need it certified by the county clerk. But not notarized.
It's just as good.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
It's good to have that nail pounded all the way in there.
Amen.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
MOU between Hampshire County Commission Committee on Aging and Hampshire County Health Department. Mrs. Wilkins. How are you today, ma'am?
Are you all?
Good evening.
Do you all have a copy of the MOU?
No.
No.
We do not.
Thank you.
Um, so basically, why I'm here tonight is, um, we're required with our Threat Preparedness Plan to do memorandum of understanding with different agencies, and the last time the MOU was updated for the Committee on Aging was in 2019. That's the last signed agreement we have with the County Commission. So, I'm trying to get MOUs back on track and updated. We're required to do this every year, um, based on our, uh, guidelines with our grant that we get for threat preparedness through the Health Department. So, the, the previous MOU was on a different template, so all I did was change the template, and it kind of resembles, um, what we did with the Board of Education, because we also use their schools, uh, for, um, different things during, um, emergencies, and also Hope Christian Church. And we're required to have three different offsites that we would use, um, in what we would call as satellite bases of operation, um, in an emergency, uh, as far as keeping public health, uh, during a public health emergency to keep things going for the community. So, our primary, um, uh, place is Hope Christian Church, and we use their gymnasium. Um, we also use the schools, uh, if available, to use their gymnasiums. And, and then the third site we had used was the School for Deaf and Blind. That front area, though, has all been condemned, so that's why they've came out of it, and I've asked to update the Romney Senior Center. I did talk to Dana Smith, um, regarding the Senior Center, and if we would need to use this in the future. I realize it's a lot smaller. I'm not anticipating use of this, but with the older population in the town of Romney and the transportation, if we would need to go on-site, um, to, to use their, their dining eating area, basically, to set up if we would need to do any kind of mass vaccinations.
So, really, it's just asking for, for use of the room and the bathrooms and...
Wi-Fi, Wi-Fi bathrooms. We would bring all of our supplies, anything we would use of theirs, we would replenish, we would put everything back the way we found if we had to move, uh, tables, chairs, things like that. And like I told Dana, we may never need to use that, but we've just got a plan in case.
Okay.
Mr. President, I would move that the Hampshire County Commission, um, approve and allow you to sign this memorandum of understanding between the Hampshire County Health Department and the Committee on Aging, and, and obviously, the Hampshire County Commission.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor have authorized the President to sign the document as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
One question I have. I have to do this yearly, so for, in the future, am I able to just put this on the agenda and submit it that way without coming each year to present it to you? Or do you need me to come and present every year?
I, I would think that would be all right. If there's major changes, you might want to come explain, but...
Yeah. Unless there's a major edit or change, I'm fine with that, too. You need just one, you want both documents signed?
Um, just one, and then I need to sign it, and then I'll give a copy back to Eric for you.
Thank you, Tim.
I'll go ahead and sign it, and then I will take you. I will send you a copy.
Can you send me the original back so I can record it and give it back to you? Get it recorded, miscellaneous. Thank you.
Just scan me a copy of this.
Thank you.
You too. We've got a few minutes, Mr. Clerk. Would you want to, do you have any, uh...
We have a few little things, yes.
Okay.
Uh, one thing I'd kind of mentioned to you, um, and we've dealt with in the past in regard to the CDBG...
Would you give this to Mr. Hott, please? Thank you.
Regarding the CDBG paperwork that comes in, you guys have already made a motion and used the precedent that the President can sign at any time, and you don't have to act on each request for, uh, reimbursement, all those kind of things that come in. But we've run into a situation or two on occasion where the President's unavailable, maybe for a few days, and they get to needing documents pretty quickly. I'd like to get your approval to, uh, put it in the minutes, and also have a, a statement sent to them saying that you guys have authorized the clerk to use the President's stamp, and then I would sign underneath it, and I would make sure, of course, the President was aware of every action that happened that way. It's something they said we should do in a, in a meeting, get it official, and then they would be able to recognize it.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, especially if we've already made a motion, ruled on it, and had a majority, and a legal motion to that effect, um, authorizing the signature, as long as it's okay with that, whichever commissioner at the time.
Well, be the President, yes.
Well, I would second that, assuming that's your motion, Commissioner.
Yeah, I'll make that a motion. I move that we authorize the use of, uh, stamped signature for the President for legal motions with majority vote. And I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you. That's very helpful. One other thing I had in mind that we, uh, we need some help with, we've run very short on fiduciary commissioners in the probate department. These are people who, attorneys, who, uh, can help negotiate between dissenting parties, in the state situations. They have some, some authority, but they make orders, recommended orders that are submitted to you, uh, which then you act on. Now, we just don't have very many of them right now. So, we had found a very proficient and experienced attorney who's kind of throttled back his business a little bit, and, uh, Daniel C. Staggers has agreed to act as our fiduciary commissioner in our rotation, and, uh, we would like to ask for your approval for Mr. Staggers to be added to our fiduciary commissioner list and, uh, be able to use him.
I'll move that we, uh, add Mr. Staggers to the fiduciary, uh, list for the, uh, as the clerk has stated, uh, we need that, uh, convenience at this time.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor of, uh, appointing Mr. Staggers to the fiduciary commissioner approved list signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Much appreciated. It's a big help. One other item that the sheriff had requested be presented to you, and we have it down in the, in the maintenance section there. The sheriff requested, he, he gets a supplement, provided he meets his targets in, in, uh, tax collections, but it comes in a lump sum, and so he and the assessor both paid this way, and he's requested that, after it's been determined that he has met those tax collection goals for the year, that he would be paid in increments, smaller amounts, so that the withholding taxes aren't quite as severe in that situation. So, uh, his, his limit is $15,000, and, and that's well...
That's something that ain't all the time. The heroes, heroes has requested some documentation.
And did he reach out to the state auditor, Mr. Clerk? Okay.
Yes, it is a legal thing.
Yeah, I under, I, I think it's, uh, I'm fine with it, uh, just as you said, that ironically, we had just talked to the state auditor about that, and as you said, uh, as long as he's collected at least 85% of the taxes and, uh, fulfilled his, his duties to tax collection, I'm totally fine with it.
Yes, I'll move that we, uh, uh, grant the sheriff's request for the, uh, of how he would like he, the 15,000, uh, commission on tax collection by the sheriff, that, that we pay it in the manner stated here.
Second the motion. All those in favor of the sheriff's request as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Do you mean to hand us this to clerk?
That was on the bottom of it. You might have just picked it up accidentally.
That's another matter. Various boards used the room during the week, and people have different tastes, but they leave things the way they left them.
Fine to pay this, but the 10.25.
Mr. President, I would move that the Commission, uh, accept and, and grant the request of the resignation of Mrs. Bear for the accumulated, uh, 5.75 days of annual leave. However, the 10.25 days of sick leave, uh, uh, would not be eligible, um, through the county, uh, as, as we just had a class on that. And, uh, uh, but it's possible with the new job that she's taken that that could be rolled over to her new job, but that would be something she would have to, uh, ask the state about. So, I, I would, uh, again, move for the first part of the request there and, and grant the acceptance to the resignation.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor of accepting the resignation as presented by the tax assessor and the payout of the 5.75 days of annual leave signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Process service fee increase request from the sheriff?
Yes.
Send the letter and card back.
Thank you.
The county commission shall determine the amount which the sheriff may charge, which charges shall not exceed the following for process service fees levied by the sheriff. So, the sheriff has made a request, West Virginia Code 59-1-14A, and a request to raise the service of process fee from $25 to $30. Just for a little background for the public. It's been a long time since that's been raised.
Yes.
There are years and years.
Not in my time.
Yeah, 20 years. I think $5 is very reasonable for inflation and everything the way it's been.
Mr. President, I would agree. So, I'd also move that we accept this request from the sheriff, and it is in accordance with the West Virginia State Code 59-11... Excuse me, 59-114A for the request of the process service fee to be raised from $25 to $30 effective immediately.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor of the sheriff's request as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. We're back ahead a little bit, Mr. Clerk. If you had anything further?
I have a couple. We have... We have exonerations and exemptions which we can get to. We also have the invoices, of course. But I had also put on the agenda, and you recall, I'd spoken with you some time back regarding a grant for election equipment. And we made that application, as you authorized me to do, and you made the caveat at the time, if we could afford it. So, I've gotten word unofficially that we probably are going to be awarded the full amount of the grant, which would be a total cost... The equipment... Total price of the equipment would be $295,000. The grant funds would pay $187.5 of that, leaving the county with $107,422 to be paid to go toward election equipment, which would allow us, as I explained, a DS 200 scanner, which would scan the ballots in each precinct. And it would also provide for electronic poll books, which we may or may not have time to get to use on this election, but it would certainly be very useful going forward. And with them matching 85% of the cost of the poll books, that kind of is the bargain on the table.
But it's a lot of money.
So...
Just to repeat your figures there, Clerk?
Yes.
The amount for... The amount of $295,000 would do scanners and poll books for all the precincts?
Yes.
And the grant would pay for 180 of that, leaving the county of...
Leaving $107,422 to the county.
Okay.
What's the deadline to respond, Mr. Clerk?
Almost as soon as they let us know that it's official, because in order to get the equipment ordered, they're talking the end of... Probably talking the end of August as a fair. So, if you would like to sit on that a little bit, I think we can probably wait till the next meeting. But they are pushing.
I would say, you know, if it's a bargain, if it's something we're going to have to eventually go to anyway, if we waited... You know, it might not be the bargain. It might be spending the whole amount if we would have to go to something that or if something that we currently have would break down. However, with the recent economy and the recent inflation, unprecedented inflation we've been seeing, we are a little bit tight.
Well, it's kind of a gamble. You never know when there might be these grant funds come available. But we were able to apply, and apparently, we're one of several counties that were able to get their full request. And so, here it is now.
Yeah, I tend to agree with Commissioner Agnew. I just... I know that it's a hell of a deal, but I just don't think at this time that we can afford to spend $107,000. I just... I just don't. Until more tax collections come in, that's why my question was mainly when would be the deadline if we had, you know, quite a few more months to see how the collections are going and see how we're doing with our other budgets and projected revenues. I'd be a lot more comfortable with that amount. And I feel like we're letting one get away, but I just... I can't in good conscience, knowing where we're at right now.
Well, it may not be getting all the way away, but if we can kind of, like I said, sit on it till the next meeting, if the opportunity still looks sweet and if things have changed in any way, we can bring that back into discussion again. But I wanted to let you know that we had been in a good position in regard to the grant.
Yeah, that's excellent work. It's a bummer right now.
One other... Were you done?
Yes, sir. No.
One other question, Mr. Clerk. Would there be a size-down volume of equipment that you would want?
Yes, I did. I did put in the grant application that I would... My minimum priority or overwhelming priority would be, as I presented it the first time, would be to get 10 of the scanners for our largest precincts. And that would be a total cost of $73,000, $36,000 to the county. And I have a good portion of that in my election fund, not all, but close to half. So, I would...
So, your budget would allow some towards this too?
Yes.
As well, on either scenario?
Yeah, it would allow $16,000 to $18,000. But I think we would see a benefit, particularly with our largest precincts, to have that scanner in place election night. I think we'd benefit from having all of them, but, you know, there's a cost-benefit thing we have to analyze here. And I'm confident that 10 of them would go a long way to helping us.
Mr. President, I would like to not forget about this item. However, table it. And since the clerk is the clerk, he can look at the budget a little closer for us, and we do have some time. So, I would just... I would move that we not forget about this item and table it and revisit it here in a couple weeks.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I agree. I'll second the motion. All those in favor of the table, the presentation as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate that.
It's 7:00. We've still got about 5 minutes. Exoneraions or exemptions?
They're thick. We have big stacks. There's been a lot of activity at the...
We can... I'm fine to save those to the end of the meeting with the invoices to let these people move on with their evening. Mr. Hott, would you be ready to present, sir? 5 minutes early?
5 minutes early. I don't know if I'm ready to present.
Yep. Apologize to everybody. It was a conflict with the state auditor meeting this morning, so we had to move the meeting around a little. So, thank you for being flexible.
It worked out well for me. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
For today.
Courthouse renovation priorities for grant submission?
Yeah, Mr. Strite gave me a copy last week or so of a survey that was done by... 2012 by Selings and Associates on this building. Pretty detailed work on that. Some of the work has been done. Obviously, the roof has been fixed, cupola. A lot of stuff has been done. What we see, the cosmetic damage interiors, what we see on the walls shines a light on things. One of the big things are, I think, and I'm not sure about the grant program, what it's able to fund. What you see, the utilities, interior stuff, is recommended. A lot of replacement work on it. Some electrical, the wiring, telecommunications wiring, some fire extinguisher work is that. But the big things, the HVAC system or lack of. So, I don't know how best to approach that. I wouldn't think we would want to do a lot of replastering and repainting, which would look good when we have other things that may come behind that. That should really be the last thing, I think, we should try to do. And I'm not sure Mr. Strite may be able to help us out with what the grant application for this would cover.
It's about 6 to 8 very specific categories. And the way I understand it, and thanks to Mr. Ronkin, and the clerk printed that packet out of the breakdown of the courthouse. But, Mr. Ronkin, we did some research, and it seems whatever you go for the grant, it must be within that subsection. So, if you get the $100,000 or the $120,000, whatever option you pick, it must be within that subsection. So, the whole amount would have to go to HVAC. The whole amount would have to go to interior improvements, millwork, or electrical, or doors. But it seems like whichever we pick, the money has... The whole amount has to go to that. You can't podge it up and do a little electrical work, a little bit of the roof. It must all go to that.
I would think, in my opinion, with... We have the roof and the water situation under control. What we don't have is we have a very old coal heating system. I think that is something that I don't know how much the grant can cover. It would be very expensive. And that's the biggest expense for this building is to put an HVAC system to be more efficient.
And we actually had a gentleman contractor come in and give us an idea of what it would take, and it was how much?
Well, what he did was using our current boiler system, which is the coal-fired unit, replacing our radiators throughout the building. That was roughly $200,000 to replace the 30-some radiators throughout the building. Our... The age of the coal boiler in that unit is such that it probably does need to be replaced in a pretty near future. I mean, anything we do, short run, would just be a Band-Aid-type fix. There are high-efficiency propane units to use a boiler system and to use the existing plumbing in the building, circulating hot water. When you talk about HVAC, you're typically talking about an exchange coil system where with our volume of space... I'm not an expert on this, but I question how efficient and effective it would be in a solid masonry wall building. Having hot water circulating through the building seems to be more practical and a time-honored method of solution of heating. Doesn't address your air conditioning situation. We have all these windows units. But there are technologies allowing some alternatives for window units now, or, you know, less obvious things. If we could do some exploring on what a furnace would be, but I'm afraid it would be significantly more than the grant would cover. However, that would use your grant money in one place pretty fast.
Yeah, and sometimes, you know, common sense has to come into play. We only get this opportunity every other year. And I'm confident to say, as one Commissioner, that no matter what, they're not going to give more than $100,000. So, the most we can bank, we can get for our buck would be option 1, where we match $20,000. They give $100,000. You know, so they give you three examples on how the grant would be given out. And all three examples makes it very obvious the max they're going to give you is $100,000. So, what can we best do for the courthouse for that kind of money is where I'm at. You know what I mean? I know we need HVAC, but to even go down that road is going to be way above $120,000. So, we need to do what's most practical with the money that we have.
Well, something that can shed a little light is our electrical systems, upgrade the electrical panels. That is, that's one thing. And replace the T-12 of go all LED in the office space. So, you would be looking at a good sizable amount, and it would be a good bit of money. I mean, I don't think it would be $100,000, but you were looking at $60,000 to $75,000 to do that, get the electrical upgrade and get with the T-12 lamps in the office space, which will help with energy savings down the road.
Well, that... Our wiring is definitely an issue with a lot of subpanels and some very old breakers, which part of my concern with the furnace, anyway, I think that some of it is just a wiring issue to some extent.
Yeah, so you're looking at those, you know, a good bit of... Would handle that one if you just dealt with it with electrical upgrades and lighting upgrades as one component in the grant. Would be one area we could concentrate on.
An opportunity might be to also fold in our networking wiring, because now we have computer systems and we've...
Telecommunication wiring is...
So, that would... That might be a really good... Just as an anecdotal thing, these lights that go around the rotunda here. When I first started, every time we turn on the light switches, at least one would burn out, usually four or five. We replaced the old Inca Descent bulbs with LEDs. And to my knowledge, in the, what, six years roughly that we've had them here, we've replaced one bulb. So, the difference in the draw, the load that they put on an old wiring system, frankly, has been a significant benefit to everybody. And the light's better. But I think if we could go to a more modern lighting, that would be a very big positive.
You can fold that in with the electrical panel upgrades and deal with that as one component with the grant.
Okay.
Get a lot of... Maybe the best bang, so to speak, with the limitations.
We still need to look at our Band-Aid for the furnace, but nonetheless, it doesn't really fit into what we're trying to do here with this grant, so...
Yeah, I still think regardless, we should get a price on a remedy for the heat mechanism for the building. And I would like to, as one Commissioner, start setting some money aside each year for that expense, because if it goes down all at once, we don't want a catastrophe in the budget. But I just... As pretty as this building is, the only way that I could think to do it unless you started a whole new structure or drop ceilings or something. If you do mini splits, long story short, you would need at least three of them, bare minimum downstairs, because of the way all the offices are closed off, unless we put transoms and different things in. And each mini split has an air handler on the wall, and you're going to have those line sets that go outside. On the outside of our brick, you're going to see that big bulky conduit.
Yep.
And we'll have a little outdoor unit about this big. Everywhere, we have a mini split all the way around the building. And I think I'd like to find something to reduce that, not make it worse.
Well, and I think when you get to that point, then you could deal with the windows, the exterior part of the building. It needs repainting and touched up.
Yeah.
And then... But I would agree with you. It would take away from the historic value of this nice building.
Well, the other thing with mini splits, you know, that's a technology that's going to be outmoded in 10, 15 years anyway. And this building's much more durable than that. So, a more permanent heating solution might be a better plan.
The other thing is we only have till September 27th to get this grant submitted. And Rolf, about how many business days would you need to complete the paperwork?
Probably need two weeks.
Okay.
It's due on the 27th of September. So, we would probably need to... What if we need to send out bids, which we would probably have to do, we'd have to do that probably soon next week or two.
Yeah, really, this meeting would be best. But worst case, if we didn't decide till next meeting, you know, it would be cutting it a little close, I guess is what I'm asking. We need to make a decision.
If we could do it, if we could get the bid out so you guys could receive bids... If we could get the bid out, so you guys could receive bids by the first meeting in September, so we have a bid that we could use against the, you know, against the grant that we can make that happen.
So if we could run an ad for an RFP in next week's paper, we'd be on track.
And I'm not rolling out new floors and fixing these chairs, and I'm really open to a lot.
Well, I was waiting, I was going to say a few things, and after I got some more knowledge on the, on the application for the grant, I think obviously, you know, the HVAC system, the heating-cooling in this building is something that's needed. It's probably not, this grant's not what we want there. We got, we got us a heck of a grant writer, maybe we need to start aggressively pestering state and federal folks for some money to help us save this old building. It's a beautiful building, I'd like to keep it and make it a landmark of our county, but when you have something like this, it's, the maintenance drudgery comes along with it. But, you know, if the, if the electrical's the first step towards fixing a lot of other things, I could go along with that. And then to echo Commissioner Cannon there, historically, our commission doesn't spend hardly a dime on themselves, but this room is starting to look pretty rough. We're on TV all the time now. You know, myself, if, you know, if the electrical gets real expensive too, and we would just want to do some cosmetic to this room, I've talked to the clerk about, you know, maybe making some more efficient use of the area. We got a lot of wasted space. I mean, we obviously don't have jurors anymore in here. That space could be used for some of the messy electrical equipment and stuff, and that's all around, make it look a little more professional. And again, I want to say that point that this commission, I've been to other commissioners' places, this commission doesn't spend anything on themselves. I've been to other commissioners' meeting rooms, and they got leather chairs, leather high-backed chairs, fancy tables, and the whole nine yards. We don't want that, but at the same time, you know, you can see, see what's going on here. At some point, we got to fix that. So just, you know, I think there's 100 things we could probably use this money for in this building, and either the electrical or a little more aggressive approach to tackling, making this, this area here that we use all the time more efficient and a little bit more professional, and just, I mean, just some paint would help, you know? It's getting, getting pretty rough. I think at some point, we just, we got to break down and do something to it. But again, I don't, you know, at least these two commissioners don't need, don't need fancy, but at the same time, we got to step in there sometime and keep it looking like the historical landmark that it is.
Would it be fair to say, ask Mr. Hott to get a bid for new floors, fixing our chairs, and maybe a new table for our guests, and fixing the plaster as one bid, and then an electrical bid to give us two choices?
That sounds like a winner to me, Commissioner.
And if the electrical gets out of sight?
Want to deal with the, I'm going to call it the hallway and the stairway in the same fashion with the carpet?
Probably at least the waiting area out there, Matthew. I mean, because it's, it's kind of all one...
It's all one thing.
Yeah, otherwise, you're going to be having a seam and so forth, but...
Gentlemen, if I may, would it be okay if I got with Matt and we discussed, because we're going to have to look at those categories, because what, what you may have just discussed may be two or three of those subcategories, and we're going to give one of them. So we're going to need, if you don't mind, we'll do that, we'll do what you're asking, but we may have to limit, you know, if they won't let us do the walls and the floors because of the walls, you know, are considered too separate, we may have to cut...
Is it, is it that specific, Rolf? I mean, that's, to me, that's kind of, that's, and that's not your guys' fault by any means, but whoever put that ability, you know, to get that grant, what if you don't want to spend $100,000 on the walls? Yeah, I mean, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but that's...
They'll give you less.
I think that may actually be part of their plan.
To weed people out, yeah, okay. Well, regardless, I think, you know, like Mr. Hott has shown us, there's, there's 100 things we could do to this old building, so let's, let's do something. I'll definitely agree with that.
I would agree with you, Mr. Aglent.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to authorize Mr. Hott to put out an RFP for, one for interior work as compiled by him and Mr. Ronkin, and a second RFP for electrical work for the courthouse?
I would second that motion.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I think it's, it only comes around every so often, and we really do need to take care of the taxpayers' properties.
Be in tomorrow.
I had one thing, we had talked about, not for you, Mr. Hott, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay.
I'd like to recommend, under correspondence and request, that the commission write a letter to our state tax department, our governor, include our delegates and senators, and I even had Tucker County Commission, Mineral County Commission, and Grant County Commission tell me that they would endorse a letter to those named recipients in regards, regarding our Airbnb issue, and explaining what a major problem Airbnb not reporting to the counties has become. And it seems to me that Airbnb only responds to law and legislation. California, according to my current research, is really the only state that I've seen that's got out in front of it. And when you're a global company that's that big, and some far-flung county in West Virginia that may have, you know, a quarter of a half a percent of your business requests documents, you're not going to get on your horse to get that information, even though it's detrimental and could get us into lawsuits. It's got, it's going, we're going down a dark path, West Virginia, the jury's out on the tourism, how beautiful our state is, and we're only going to get more Airbnbs, I think, until it plateaus in the next half decade. So I'd like to write a letter to, and I'll rename the state tax department, the governor, our House of Delegates, including our, our delegates and state senators, detailing the dynamic that we're in as a county and how we're stuck basically between a rock and a hard place, not knowing who's paying what tax. And I'd like, like there to be some encouragement. I'd also like a recipient, Mr. Clerk, to be the Association of Counties. We pay them dues, and they fight on our behalf because of our, being part of their association, and they have lobbyists in Charleston. So I'd like them to be a recipient of this letter, and I don't want to belabor and ramble, so I wanted to assure you that I, that myself as one commissioner will help write the letter. But is that an idea you would go along with, sir?
Yes, yes.
And do you have anything to add?
No, I covered that earlier in depth, and talked, as well as Commissioner Cannon, I talked to some other counties that are training here the last two days, and folks that maybe not necessarily have run into the, and caught a mistake like we have, but they definitely see the need, you know, for that reporting that Airbnb does to be in more detail. So, yeah, I would certainly agree to that proposal, Commissioner.
Would you like to come up, Delegate Hillenbrand, to speak on the topic real quick?
Yeah, if you don't mind, thank you.
See you, guys. So I know you've done some work on this, which I appreciate.
Yeah, a little bit, and I appreciate your concern, and I think it extends, as you've already identified, beyond Hampshire County. We've talked briefly and formally on this. If we could put together a little bit of some of the examples, et cetera, I've talked with Chairman Phillips, who is the Chair of the Government Organization Committee in the House, and he believes his counterpart in the Senate, Senate Woodroom, would be amenable if we can put something together, and it doesn't have to be very formal, even in parallel to what you're talking, and we can prep them, and we can basically try and get on our October interim schedule to have the Airbnb folks come and talk to us down in the legislature with regards to why aren't they playing nice in the sandbox?
Good.
And I'd like to help facilitate that, so if you're, if you, you know, working together with you, I'll be that conduit to get that to happen.
That would be excellent, yes, yes. I mean, it seems the only thing that they're really going to respond to is law, you know, whether you guys give us the authority to make an audits, or, you know, we can't do anything that supersedes state law, but, or if you guys would just take care of it, it would be great. But it's so tiny, it's pathetic to me that, you know, it's became this big of a spectacle. All we want to see is what taxpayers are paying which amounts. They give lump-sum checks, and I realize that's a little bit more paperwork for them, but it's, I didn't think it would be a lot to ask, but I do understand they're a big company, but it's, there's absolutely no way for us to see who's actually paying their tax and who isn't. You know, anyways, it's...
Well, as you've, as you've discussed previously in this very meeting here, I understand the concern, and I think is valid, and there are tools that we have at our disposal to put them in the hot seat, and either make them comply on their own, or we can force it through other means.
Definitely, thank you.
Thank you for the effort, Delegate.
No, I appreciate what you're doing, and, you know, we can obviously work outside of this, you know, forum, we don't need to do this here at times.
So do I hear a motion to...
Yeah, I would, I would move that we write the letter, and Commissioner Cannon has graciously volunteered, I assume, to work with the clerk in writing that, and that we send it to the entities he named, and that we do that as soon as possible.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. The other thing that I wanted to bring forward, Commissioner, was a, and I believe you were there as well, the state auditor training, Harrison County had a great idea with the funding request form, and I sent you a copy of that. Did you get a chance to, if you didn't get a chance to read that, I'd like to wait, but...
I didn't really, no, I didn't get a chance to go over that as, as in-depth as I should, so I would say, let's, but I do like, I like the idea, the general idea of it, I haven't looked at the details.
Okay, we'll wait on that. And really, I have nothing further. Exonerations or exemptions?
There aren't the exonerations, a lot of people wouldn't pay their taxes, a lot of them do not so here, the founding fathers, states, and so on. So if you look at those, those are exemption questions, we'll make CSA as well.
I didn't see any discrepancies, did you?
The only thing, Commissioner, I'd like to re-stress on those, is that, and I see that the tax deputies have noted that on a couple of them. You know, a lot of them, the reason is that they've sold the property. I want to make sure that the, and usually, I've even noticed in deeds now, when I'm down in the clerk's deed room, that the attorneys are transferring it, but I want to make sure these ones that say property sold, that the new owner is getting the bill. I'd like to reinforce that. The other thing I'd like to reinforce is that some of the questionable ones, that we're still doing, you know, physical visits to make sure.
Okay.
But I would agree for the, and make a motion that we approve those. However, I just would like to, to send that, that note back to our, our folks that do that for us, that we're following up on the, on the sale, and that the new person's getting the bill, and that we do some, some site visits to make sure on some of them. But I don't have a problem with any of those, that's just a general thing that I'd like for us to make sure we're keeping up with.
Would you like to have the clerk start an email thread?
It could be an email, or we could send a short memo back with those, when we, I believe he sends those back to them. We could, we could send the memo, or maybe both would be best.
Okay.
A short-written memo with, with an email that we'd just like to, you know, make sure we're continuing to do that, because as you've stated, as a contractor, the things are busier, there's, there's some more people moving back in, there's people fixing up cabins that were historically maybe dud cabins, so just like for us to make sure we're, we're fairly charging everybody that needs to be charged.
I'll make sure you get to see that before I send it over to them.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion to approve the exemptions as presented?
Yeah, he did, but...
Yeah, I've made that in the form of a motion, sir.
Second the motion, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Here's, just had a quick question on these 140s. These are, I was just wondering why they were above the original?
Because...
They were late.
Yeah, they were, they were late, yeah. I guess they didn't pay attention to it at first, and then...
Okay.
And I would also move that we, I'll wait till the clerk steps out of the... I would also move that we approve the exonerations presented by our assessor since the last meeting.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
And then, Commissioner, I think Rolf has something he'd like to speak on.
Documentation. Yes, please come forward.
To see where you're at.
We still have invoices as well.
I know this is under the...
This may, okay. We'll address the grant writer document under continuing maintenance on the agenda.
There's no action, gentlemen, that I'm asking. I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware. The only, your first page is you're active project still under ARP mounts. The only, your first page is you're active project still under ARP mounts. Romney Bulk and the Cape and Bridge Tech Park are actively sending invoices in, and we're actively paying them. The radio update ARP 03, they were, they did that the first two years, they made an annual purchase right around December. This year, they skipped. This would be Tad Malcolm's EMS equipment purchase. I actually reached out to him, talked to him shortly yesterday, but did not talk to him about that, so I'm trying to get an answer on that 92,000. I know it was a three-year plan to buy radios, but they seemed to not have purchased the third year.
Okay.
I am still waiting for an answer on the 56-plus for the broadband expansion one. Commissioner Englinger, you may have an answer from Aaron.
Yes, I did check on that, Rolf, as I told you I would. Mr. Cox says that there, of course, you're probably familiar with his map for that project. He says there is one short line. Well, I don't want to say line. I'm not, I'm not the technician like he is. There is one short project left that will need to be completed and invoiced. He felt like that would take most of that that was left there. And what's the, what's the date we are, we are, our final date on these numbers?
31 December. We're locked in. So, the wastewater shanks is complete. That money will drop down. I did talk to Commissioner Hod. He wanted to zero it out. He wanted me to tell them that, no more. So, that is happening. Although, Mr. Hod has left, I have had a couple of conversations with him on the Community Events Center. He did the things that that money was actually going to be used for. He actually was out and set flags on where this thing could be, you know, possibly put on the fairgrounds. So, his feeling is that money was well-spent on himself doing the work, and that we don't need to spend 20,000 on an engineer to do what he's already done, just so you're aware. And then, like I said, the tech park transition is active. If you look to the last page, that is the LATCF, the $100,000. I did lump in interest earned since the start of ARP, so you see the balance through May 31st. You could probably add easily another $1,000 for that. That is the remaining funds after we did do one project, which was the generator up towards Berkeley Springs. We use that, some of that funding there, but you do have a remaining balance of 85,296 dollars. Under the major ARP, we are actually over by 7,600. That is because a invoice came in almost a year late after we had zeroed out their project, but when you put back what they had not spent, then that is the reason why we added it back in, because it was budgeted, it was allocated. So, whatever funds that we dropped, like that 12,557, that will drop, and it will wipe out our deficit, if you want to say that, of the 7651, and we'll still have around $5,000 extra. And then, of course, any reallocation of funds, and you can see on the first page at the bottom in the first column, just a what-if-ism there, is if we did have those extra funds available, what that added up to, but that's not where we're at today. So, I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware, you gentlemen, were aware of where we actually are with ARP funding, so.
So, I don't think I'm tracking you on taking the 12,000. You said something about taking the 12,557, and...
Yeah, what I mean by that, and I explained it about as poorly as I could, that is going to be zeroed out. Bob Hod, Commissioner Hod...
That includes, so that 8300 invoice is not coming out of that? That's the figure? That 8300s already came out of that project, correct? The invoice that was recently submitted last week?
It will, if you look at page two, Commissioner Cannon, the total allocated funds right now is 4,509,000, but if you look to the right, that's actually what the government gave us, 4,501,000. So, the difference is 7651. So, we're over-allocated by 7,600. That's what I'm trying to say. So, when you do take that 12,000, zero it out, you have the leftover minus the 7651.
I understand.
And the 7651 came from, oh, the First Responder Software Equipment Package, ARP 27. We had zeroed that out at around 21,000 last January, because it hadn't been spent, and it was looking that it would not be spent, and lo and behold, the local contractors gave us an invoice dated almost a year late. That was, you know, and we did pay that.
Okay.
Well, it's in the system to be paid, is what I should say. And of course, broadband two is still in planning stages, so there's been no money spent.
That's '05, right? That's '05? Money spent? It's the second?
That's the second iteration.
It's the second deadline?
Second deadline, yep. But again, just as a reminder, all allocations will be locked in stone on January 1st, 2025, so.
For both deadlines?
I'm sorry?
For both deadlines?
Well, for that, yes. For the deadline of allocation, and when they have 2025 to spend their money. In 2026, we have to write a check back to the government if we have not spent all of the money.
We need to check on, Commissioner, we should get with Mr. Cox for broadband expansion two. I don't know the details of the planning. It's been quite a while since we spoke about that, whether the, to make sure that the planning there, now that there's other funds coming, that we haven't doubled, doubled up there?
Yeah.
And, but if that's, but if that money is connected to another grant that he's worked on, then that, that area would be a part of what they were talking about today accounted for. You following me?
Exactly.
But that's something we should check on, because...
See if it's duplicate funded a certain area.
Yeah. But however, if he's been working with other grants, and that, use that money as cost share, then that, technically, that map they showed us today, that might be accounted for with this money, not...
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
You following me?
Yep, yeah. It would be smart to check into it. Also, I'd like to bring it up to Mr. Malcolm, the 92,000 towards the radio. See the, check out the radio situation and see the status of the radios, and if perhaps some of that money could be used towards the EMS building.
Yeah, I think certainly over the years, since we first looked at these applications, I mean, like anything in the world, things change, and, you know, obviously, they didn't buy radios this year. Maybe it's because, you know, they couldn't get it contracted, or there wasn't what they wanted available, or maybe they're happy with what they got, so we need to keep a check on these things, because we can put it to better use if, and again, I don't want to speak too far out of turn, you know, it could be a different reason, you know, it could be that they, they weren't available, or, but it's certainly worth checking on, just to see.
Thank you, Rolf. Appreciate the update. Head voices?
You have them?
Is there anything else? Eric?
One of my point, our bookkeeper suggested that I would point out to you that...
One of our neighboring partner counties with our South Branch Validating Report Center paid their contribution using opioid settlement funds to the $20,000 check, and she thought that might be a good option for us.
Yeah, yeah.
We've got a little time to make that contribution. We don't have to do it right away, so.
Okay, thank you. Clerk, does the Financial Stabilization Fund reflects one of our CDs? Is that correct?
Yes.
Could you reiterate what you were saying about the $20,000 to the day report, Eric?
We make a contribution to day report. One of the three counties that are partners in that make an annual contribution to support match funds for that grant, and so...
Are they, they're requesting that this month?
No.
Okay.
But we generally do it, you know, in this neighborhood.
It was selected on the payment report. I didn't know if we were cutting that check right now or not.
She didn't say, but the other county had done it, and it wouldn't hurt to go ahead if we're going to use, especially if we're going to use the opioid funds to do it. It would certainly be an appropriate usage, I would think.
Yeah, I think we were trying to save that money. The Development Authority has given the county commission, the, or the building commission, the old board office, for use by the day report and the sheriff's office. So, those opioid monies, we were, I was hoping to save for in case that building needs something of that nature. And also, unless they need this 20,000 right now, I'd like to, I'd like to hold it, to be honest with you. I don't know how you feel about that, Brian, but the 20... We always gave them 15,000. You remember, they came in and requested 5,000 more?
It was 17,600 or something?
Seventeen, yes. So, it's up that...
We bumped it to 20.
Right.
But it's in the invoices here to be paid. Personally, unless they, unless they need it, I'd like to hold it until our next meeting.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
We can just do that.
I think, I'm just trying to be as frugal as we can right now.
What, and what were you saying about the opioid funds for, you're talking about the space that they use for the actual, to run the operation? Was that true?
So, the old board office was one of the only buildings worth keeping over there at the...
Yeah, okay.
Current Romney Elementary Board of Education property.
Yeah.
And they were working on a presentation with the sheriff and the day report to petition the West Virginia First Foundation, you know, as a joint project, working against our drug epidemic, and kind of teaming up to use that building as a project to petition the West Virginia First Foundation for monies. For lack of a better way of explaining it, so that 55 to 65,000, I was hoping we could hold on to, to see what they're going to do with that building, because really, as the clerk said, it's a very specific set of approved uses for that money.
Yeah. Would the, the other counties would, the, share the responsibility of our, of our, I'm sorry, it left my mind, the...
Day report.
Day report. The other counties would be helping with that?
Well, we need to talk about that. We really do.
Because it's always been stationed with us, is that...
It has since 2012, I think it was, because that was in Hardy County to start with. Ultimately, our big cost of working with them is just, we do the bookkeeping. They pay their own rent, and their current site has not been physically very good for a while. They've had several major issues. They called yesterday morning and asked to use the courtroom, because their space was unusable. Weather was really good, so they used the pavilion over across the Judicial Center, but they're having some serious issues, and so a new facility would certainly be very helpful. What it would take, you know, that's, that's a reasonable use, reasonable use of that money, and whether or not the other counties would come in on that, I don't know, but pretty much, they pay their own physical housing. They pay their own rent.
In Hardy County, they, they do allow them their building there at Hardy County, there, I think their subsidized rent are rent-free, and then in Pendleton County, the building they have is on the Economic Development Authority property of the county, so they take the money that Pendleton County gives them, the 20,000, and they use that to pay rent to the Development Authority, so it stays within the county.
So...
So, really, we don't... I don't expect to offer them the building completely for free.
Right, all right. So, getting back to the amount itself, though, Commissioner, your reason for wanting to hold off, I was just, that's a budgeted amount, though, that we budgeted. That, that's brought into the budget early on, right, Eric? That's, you know, that's another one, no, that's almost a line item, right?
Yeah, it is line item. It's something you allocate.
So, you would just, you would say, hold off because we would, to research using the opioid money?
Well, the reason I'm saying hold off is just because money's tight right now for this, paying them the full $20,000 this meeting, but the 65,000, I was saying, hold it until we figure out what kind of presentation they're going to make on the building, because really, that's about the only thing that we really have came up with that that money can be used for legally.
Sure, sure. Well, again, on the budgeted amount, if we can wait, if it's not due, we can wait. I don't think we would have to wait, certainly.
Well, bear in mind, they're also reimbursing us for helping them with cash flow, their salaries along and stuff. So, we're in a good shape there. That's not an urgent...
You okay with that?
Sure, okay.
So, I'll just convey that to the girls. We'll hold that check.
Mr. President, if you have no other questions on the invoices and the financial statement, I would move that we approve those as presented.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor approving the invoice, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
I have no other business.
I would move... You want public comment, Mr. President? I've been...
Let's not.
We're down to two guys.
They're both long-winded.
Both long-winded.
You don't have a comment, okay. No, no further.
Okay, I'd move that we adjourn.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Meeting adjourned. Eric's got to get us offline there.
Yes, give me one second.